I think I went a little too early. Excellent. Well, thank you all so much. Happy, happy New Year. And this is the first city council meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council since our recess of 2024. And with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Searcy.
Here.
Councilmember Fulter. Councilmember Dubala.
Present.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Small.
Rock Rock on.
Wonderful. So I just want to do a quick check. Unfortunately, because of all of the various forms of of holiday calls that are floating around, we have a number of folks that are participating via Zoom today. And so I just want to make sure that Councilmembers Fulter and Siemens are able to hear us. That we are able to hear them. Perfect. I think, I think we're getting there. So one of the, the main things that we have on the agenda for today is an update from County Councilmember Kate Stewart. So we're extremely excited to have her here today. The second item will be a work session and ordinance amending the city, amending the city code to remove provisions regarding the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee. And that is a 20-minute discussion. I am going to change the order of the agenda a little bit, just in light of Councilmember Stewart's schedule. And so what I would like for us to do is to have the presentation with Councilmember Stewart before public comments this evening. And that's just a way for us to make sure that we're able to move the schedule forward expeditiously. And just as a quick reminder for the audience tonight, on Wednesday, I'm sorry, on Monday, January the 15th, is the Martin Luther King Day and city facilities are closed Sunday and Monday for the holiday. Want to encourage people to definitely partake of a act of service on Martin Luther King Day. On Wednesday, January the 17th, the council will meet at 7:30. We will have a legislative update, voting sessions, first reading ordinance amending the city code to remove provisions regarding the Nuclear Free Committee, a resolution approving the city manager's contract, work sessions, facilities regulations, as well as proposed, proposed revisions to sidewalk and traffic calming policies and a committee appointment recommendations. On Wednesday, January the 24th, we will have another legislative update and we will have a presentation from the Montgomery County Public Schools, or MCPS, on the public schools attended by Tacoma Park residents. We will also have a voting session, a second reading ordinance amending the city code to remove provisions regarding
Progress.
Committee.
Committee.
As well as a consent agenda item.
In terms of resolutions.
Approving the appointments to committees. We will also have a work session, video camera trailer memorandum of understanding. On Thursday, January the 25th, the County Council Public Hearing will be held on the Tacoma Park Minor Master Plan Amendment. That is at 7:00 PM and will be at the Tacoma Park Middle School. I want to encourage everyone to sign up in advance by January the 24th at 5:00 PM. That is what is required in order to testify. And then closing out the month of, well, almost, on January the 26th, the council will have a retreat. And on Saturday, January the 27th, the Benefit Corporation for Africa Forum will be held here. And it's from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So with that, I'm going to move on to our presentation for the evening. An update from County Councilmember Kate Stewart. We're slated for an hour, but I do just want to make sure that everyone has received the latest presentation deck. And if folks would upload our slide deck from the council. So while our, our presentation is loading, I just want to welcome Councilmember Stewart, well, Vice President, County Councilmember Stewart. As former mayor of the city of Tacoma Park, we are very honored to have you and have really appreciated your partnership over the years. It's been so helpful for us, having you in the county and being able to work alongside you to get the things that we need in the city done here. So I want to just take a few minutes to kind of walk through just a few slides that will highlight city of Tacoma Park priorities and what are some of the things that we're looking for from the county's perspective in terms of what we need. And so one of the things that we've done as a council is establish our city council priorities. And it's a tool to guide the policies and budget decision-making and outline strategies towards our desired outcomes as a community. So on April the 12th of last year, the council established and adapted its priorities through 2024. And they consist of the following five goals. One is advancing a community of belonging. The second is ensuring that our city has fiscally sustainable government, that we are an environmentally sustainable community and encourages community development for improved and equitable quality of life and has an engaged, responsive, service-oriented government. So again, what we're going to do is just kind of walk through some of the things that we're hoping to partner with you, the county exec and other members of the county council to achieve. Next slide. So in terms of advancing a community of belonging, one of the biggest things that we're trying to do is really leverage some of the lessons learned in COVID, but also recognizing a number of the needs of our unique community. We're really pushing to continue advocacy efforts focused on immigrant rights and needs, including connecting those in need of assistance with the appropriate area organizations and supporting and protecting immigrants and refugees. And we're also trying to build on the lessons learned from COVID and provide services to support residents in need such as improved schools, social services and mental health. One of the things that I do think is really important to note for us is that we are, we did a lot under your leadership as well with our ARPA dollars and really providing services to members of our community. But those dollars are drying up. And now more than ever, we realize that that need still exists. So some of the things that we're really looking for the county council and the county exec to support is additional funds for the MCPS budget to fund the much-needed improvements in Tacoma Park schools, specifically Piney Branch Elementary School and Blair High School. Piney Branch Elementary will be something that will come up during the Minor Master Plan Amendment that you all will be working on very soon. And so we're really hoping to make sure that the funds are in the CIP for the much-needed modernizations of that building. We're also looking for additional support to help with childcare services to make them more accessible and affordable. That's a huge issue that a number of residents in our community are facing right now. Our rec center is busting at the seams in terms of its programs. So identifying ways in which we can work with the county to have more resources available to meet that need would be a much-needed value. Another big thing is additional funds to the county budget to address community mental health service needs through initiatives.
I'm not hearing the mayor anymore.
That we use some of our ARPA dollars.
I believe she may have dropped off.
Of a contract with the county to have mental health service counselors join us and work with us in terms of making improvements in how we provide services.
Wait for the mayor to.
But more importantly, enable us to have more direct mental health service provision to residents in the community. So really though, once those dollars expire, oh. Oh, did we lose Terry?
Immigration rights and needs is the last thing he heard.
Okay. Can we just make sure that? No worries, no worries. Let's just make sure that our folks who are, and this is why I normally keep my cellphone handy. Let's just make sure that folks who are having tech problems can hear us. All right. I think we're okay. Can we get a thumbs up to our colleagues to make sure that everyone can hear okay? All right. We're going to restart the Zoom just so that we can make sure that everybody's here.
Hopefully our sound man is resolving this problem.
Let's do a mic check just to make sure that our Zoom colleagues, if you all could just give me a thumbs up. Excellent. Wonderful. I saw Andrew's hand. So I think.
I just want you to know it's me, Terry. I had your back.
Well, I appreciate you doing that, Councilmember Small. Excellent. Perfect. And if we could just go back one slide. One more. Perfect. All right. So we talked a little bit about MCPS. Also childcare services and mental health services. And then another thing that food insecurity is huge. We've provided grants, but again, and it kind of relates to our first item about our immigrant population, making sure that folks are aware of SNAP benefits and have them available to them is also critically important. Next slide. So in terms of a fiscally sustainable government, one of our biggest things is our priorities this year is to increase our advocacy and lobbying activities at the state and county levels, to advocate for additional revenue sources for municipalities and to advocate at the county and state levels for changes to property taxes to assist residents in need. In 2024, tax dupe, we, we, you know, it's always at the forefront of my mind. But one of the things that we're really looking for is we're going up to that 100% phased in, phase in amount. And we want to make sure that that stays in and that we reach that amount. Another thing is that once we hit that phase in, a couple of years later, there will be a need for a reassessment of the tax dupe formula. And so just wanting to make sure that that is also on everyone's radar. Tax dupe is something really important to ensure that the services that we provide that are duplicative, that we're adequately reimbursed for that. Another big thing is supporting any kind of legislation on property tax credit programs, county property tax. We saw one that was coming up recently to support homeowners and renters. We see all the time, a number of residents that are facing financial hardships. And so trying to identify those mechanisms to provide a little bit of relief is always important. Next slide. So environmentally sustainable community. So one of the big things that we want to do is make sure that we're coordinating and advocating for climate change mitigation, resiliency, sustainability funds and programs with nonprofit organizations, county, state, region and federal governments. What we're looking to do is to just ensure that the county continues to support and expand resources to the Montgomery County Green Bank, also supporting electrification, energy efficiency and storm water mitigation efforts, including grant funds and technical assistance to aid multifamily property owners, rental and condominium communities. Councilmember Stewart, you, you've been contacted by some of our communities and our condo communities that are experiencing large financial hardships. The big storm that came through yesterday can impact buildings tremendously and a number don't have the resources available to, to face the multimillion dollar costs. So anything that the county can do to help mitigate those things are really important. Next slide. So the community development for an improved and equitable quality of life, this is really a bucket for the things that we want to do to ensure that our community is just a great place to live. Part of the challenges that we've experienced, and I know that you've heard it at, at no end, is working with the SHA to address safety and dangerous intersections as identified by Montgomery County, predictive safety analysis and Tacoma Park Police data, advocate for transportation improvements at impact, access and safety of Tacoma Park residents through regional collaborations and coordinated efforts, including purple line construction, metro, bike lanes, et cetera. And I know that's a big thing for you and your role, your former role in COG, really trying to make some of those improvements. So we're really looking for that partnership as we try to leverage SHA to increase its responsiveness, to fix some of the streets, roads in our community. Also wanting to, and this came up in a presentation I heard you speak to earlier, leveraging some of those county efforts that you have to address some of these pedestrian issues. Things like signal timing, if that's something that the county can do for state highways, that would be great. And we have a whole slew of intersections that if we could just get those signals a little longer, that would be great. And then two, you know, also just continuing to make sure that we're advancing affordable housing, which is really, really important for us. You know, just cause is, is a state law, but wanting to make sure that there's county support for that as the city will be advocating as well. But also just making sure that we're working in partnership in terms of increasing the stock of affordable housing and addressing our missing middle. And that, you know, will become front and center when we're talking about the Minor Master Plan. And really trying to make sure that a zoning allows for the creation of affordable housing, but also addressing that missing middle and looking for resources where we can work in partnership with the county and different organizations within our community that want to develop their parcels to provide that affordable housing and making sure that those resources are available. And then with that, now I'm just going to beg a little bit. And I know, and I know that this, that, you know, the county exec, he's on the hit list. So, you know, he'll, he'll be on the list. But I do just want to make sure that folks are aware of our library renovation project that's going on. You're intimately familiar. And so we're making a lot of progress, but we experienced quite a few challenges along the way, just in terms of construction. And I want to thank you and your staff because when we were having some difficulties with getting our permits, placed a couple of emails and you all shook it loose. I really do appreciate your advocacy with that. But the delays that we experienced ultimately resulted in a number of additional costs. And so we will be asking the county exec to, to help us with a couple of fees that we've experienced over the course of not only the delays that resulted in an extra $270,000 in terms of our costs, but we also experienced some fees that we're hoping could be waived because we are a municipality. So the transportation impact fee, we were assessed a $134,000 fee. And those fees are set by the county and assessed on new residential and commercial buildings in additions to commercial buildings. The county funds in part improvements necessary to increase transportation or public school systems capacity. So we think it's a pretty reasonable ask that because we are a municipality that we should be exempt from that fee. And we will be following up with the county exec and his staff because I know that that's, that's his area. But I would be remiss if I missed this opportunity to at least make sure that you knew in your capacity that that was something that we wanted to bring to your attention. So I've drone on quite a bit. But I do want to, again, thank you for coming in today and then provide you with an opportunity to just give us an update on some of the great work that you're doing at the county.
Turn this on. Well, thank you. It's great to be back. I, as I walked into the building, I almost went upstairs to check my mail. And I was like, the muscle memory is so strong. It's, it's wonderful to see everyone. And yeah, so it's been a year that this county council has been together. Just as a reminder, we moved from nine council members to 11 with the last election. And at the moment, we have a majority of women on our county council. Each year, the county council holds elections for president and vice president. Last year, the president of the council was Evan Glass. And this year, council president is Andrew Friedson, who was the vice president last year. And I have the privilege to serve now as the vice president of the council. I will continue to chair government operations and fiscal policy. So not jumping ahead, but tax duplication comes to that committee and looking forward to working with this council as well as the Maryland Municipal League and Mayor Ashton, who really led the charge when we were working on this together a number of years ago. And as you said, FY25 is supposed to be when all of the municipalities get fully funded. We want to make sure that remains on schedule and in the budget and that we prepare for that three-year review. In addition to that, I serve on the Transportation and Environment Committee and can talk a little bit about some of the things we've been doing there. Kind of to highlight the first year of the county council and things that we accomplished, I'm just going to give you a smattering across the board. We were really busy this first year. I think one of the things that was really, I guess monumental for the council was to pass rent stabilization across the county. And that obviously goes to our housing goal that we all share. In addition to making sure that we're building housing, we also want to make sure that we have stable, reliable housing for residents of the community. And I know in particular Tacoma Park has had rent stabilization for a while. But for the surrounding communities, especially those for people who live along the purple line and other areas, making sure they have stable rents that they can rely on, the increase year to year and not have huge spikes like we've been seeing is really important. The other thing that this council really focused on last year was pedestrian safety. And there were a couple of really landmark things that happened. One was we passed a pedestrian master plan in the county. This was our very first pedestrian master plan. And it's really historic because there really aren't many jurisdictions across the country that have pedestrian master plans. It is a lengthy document. There are a lot of recommendations. But one, one of the core principles of the pedestrian master plan is not just to look at safety as a requirement. Obviously, that is incredibly important. But to really encourage people to be walking more in our community, we need to make sure there's a level of comfort in walking. And so you'll see the pedestrian master plan, a number of the recommendations in there and guidelines as we move forward, go to making sure that we have a community where people feel comfortable walking. And so things like making sure we have trees and shaded areas are really important. So I would, I would check that out if you haven't yet, but that is a terrific document that will help guide us moving forward in the county. The other thing was the Safe Streets Act that Mayor Searcy was referencing before that we passed and was signed in September. And that will And that will help with making sure that we can lengthen the time that pedestrians have to cross streets. In addition to that, and some of our, they can't hear anymore? Nope.
Can folks hear me? I just want to make sure it's not a mic issue.
Okay. Is it this mic?
Nope. They're not hearing anything. Okay.
Okay, okay. All right, can you hear now?
Can you hear now?
Yes, yes, okay. The other thing it will do is look at in some of our downtown areas, take away the right turn on red to increase pedestrian safety. And then really importantly, it looks at our having infrastructure reviews when we have incidents in school zones. And so the thinking here is let's not wait until we have a crash. Let's, if there are incidents inside a school zone, let's take a look at the infrastructure there and do a review to see what we can do so that we avoid a crash in the future. So we've already appropriated money for this. Our Department of Transportation has begun work. And so I think that is a huge step forward for pedestrian safety in our community. We've also begun, and I actually had a meeting this morning with the superintendent of our schools because we are collaborating a lot more between our Department of Transportation and Montgomery County Public Schools when they're looking at the safe routes to schools. So I think that collaboration is going to be very useful. I know, I think residents, many residents have been waiting for the gas-powered leaf blower ban that finally passed the council. And we're just waiting for the rebate program and information from our director of D E P so that can move forward. One of the things that was really important, and this goes to, as you were talking about the schools this year, was making sure when we dealt with the budget in the spring is that we closed the gap in our C I P for our construction projects. Because when we received the budget last spring, there was a very, there was a fairly large gap. And if we did not find a way to close that, we were going to have to cut infrastructure projects or our schools. The council was able to do that through updating our recordation tax. And so those, all the projects that were in the pipeline at that time last year did move forward. Now, this is going to be a new budget year. And so we're needing, we'll need to see, we will get the C I P actually on Tuesday. The county exec will present that and, you know, we'll begin looking at that and moving forward. Having had my own children go through M C P S, I know the struggles we have at Piney Branch as well as Blair. And I can assure you that, you know, keeping those top of mind as we go through our C I P and make decisions will definitely be there. And I will work with councilmember Mink. Blair High School is actually in her district, even though I also claim it. So since so many of our families in the district attend Blair. Another thing I do want to highlight is some of the economic development and businesses that we've been supporting and that have opened in the county. I think particularly in District Four, we've seen, you know, Uniqlo, Nike come to downtown Silver Spring. United Therapeutics in December just announced their plans to not only stay in downtown Silver Spring, but to expand and to partner with the county. We have Choice Hotels that opened their new world headquarters in North Bethesda. And so, and we're seeing here in Tacoma Park, and I just want to give a shout out to Ira Coller because he is amazing. And the work that he's been doing along with a lot of other staff here in Tacoma Park. And we've been really happy to partner with some of the businesses like Koma, People's Book, and Ciel Rojo. Unfortunately, there were some bumps in the roads with some of them, but working with Ira and the business owners, we're glad to see all of them open now. As I said, I'm the chair of the Government Operations Committee. And one of the things that I've been really focused on this year is transparency in our government and fiscal responsibility. And so you'll see that we are spending a lot more time on the county council reviewing and discussing appropriations. So requests for dollars that come from the county exec's office outside of the regular budget cycle. Actually, having been here and thanks to our city clerk, Jesse Carpenter, you know, I was used to having budget amendments every couple of months that outlined them, and we have a different process at the county. And so I'm glad that we've been able to revise that and spend more time looking at that appropriations. And Jesse, you taught me well when I was here, so thank you very much. And so just, those are some of the things, and again, we've done a lot of work, but I wanted to highlight some of the things in the last year that I think were really important. Looking to the future now and this year, I'm very excited about a number of things. In particular, Tuesday, when the county council resumes our regular meetings, I will be introducing with the council president, a zoning text amendment called F A I T. It's facilitating affordable, inclusive, transformational housing. And what this will do is help houses of worship, institutions of faith, if they find themselves land-rich, meaning they have property, but they need money or for their mission, they would like to develop that and put affordable housing, whether it's townhomes or condos or apartments, so rental or homeownership, that it facilitates an easier development process for them. And so I'm really excited to introduce that on Tuesday and work with a number of our faith institutions on moving that forward to create affordable housing. In addition to that, on Tuesday, we also have at the county council, the Office of Legislative Oversight, which does research reports, among other things, for the county council. And one of the first things I did when elected last year was request a report looking at LGBTQ plus access to healthcare, particularly trans healthcare. And that report will be coming out next week. Not surprising for many people who have actually families or know folks. We are, in Montgomery County, actually a desert when it comes to access to trans healthcare. Many of our families need to go into the district or go to Columbia, Maryland to seek care. And so I'm looking forward to this report helping us identify how we can do better. We are already seeing that given the great work that our governor is doing, Governor Moore, in being supportive of LGBTQ plus families, and unfortunately, the rise of hate and anti-LGBTQ plus, particularly trans legislation around the country, we're seeing a lot more families coming here and deciding to move to Montgomery County and the state of Maryland. And we need to make sure that we have the healthcare we need for the families that are already here and those who are coming. In addition to that, one of the things that we're looking at and haven't introduced yet, but will in the near future, so stay tuned, is a plastic bag ban for the county. Again, learning the lessons I did here in Tacoma Park. And we will make sure to keep you all abreast of that as that moves forward. So there are many, those are just some very tangible examples of things I'll be introducing and working on. We have a whole bunch of other things. But I do want to also say that we will keep front and center the work on mental health. That is something that we need to be doing better on in the county. It was something I highlighted when we did the budget last spring. And I have talked to the county exec about this, and we need a more comprehensive plan in our county to address the mental health crisis we have, especially among our young people. So that continues to be a top priority. Do you want to spend a moment, I know, on some of your priorities, particularly on the climate work, and thank Councilwoman DeBala for all, her great work on this. I know she gave a lot of input when the county passed their BEPS, their Building Energy, wait, BEPS. Building Energy Performance Standards. Thank you. I always forget the P. So we will be, we have the regulations now, and we will be reviewing those in the Transportation and Environment Committee, starting the end of this month. And so I would love the city of Tacoma Park to weigh in on those if you have opinions. Along with that, I did just recently get an update from the Green Bank on some of their work they're doing. And specifically had requested to them and will send to you all more information on the work they're doing with common ownership and condos. They're doing a great deal of work and have a number of programs. Specifically, as I think you all know, they're working with the Overlook right now and New Hampshire Towers, two different projects. But hopefully, they'll both be completed in April. And so the Green Bank wants to, you know, get out there more with the information. And as soon as we have that, we will share that with all of you because we know there are more condo buildings and other apartment buildings that can really benefit from the support of the Green Bank. In addition, just staying on climate for a minute, we have, I don't, Newish, I guess he's still new, director of our Department of Environmental Protection and John Monger, and he is terrific. He comes from the federal government. And if you all haven't had the opportunity to meet with him yet, I strongly suggest it. I think really excited about the leadership he's going to bring to the county as we move forward on our climate change goals. A couple of other things, just to highlight some of the things that you all brought up also. You know, I think Purple Line, I was mentioning to someone the other day, I think I wake up in the morning with an email on the Purple Line, I go to bed at night with an email on the Purple Line, working with Delegate Charcutian, and our office is constantly advocating for residents or the businesses regarding the Purple Line. And so any way that we can continue that partnership with the city, please let us know. I, our district, I believe, has the most Purple Line stops of any district, so it is always top of mind for us. And we want to continue working with all of you on that. Also, looking at some of your advancing, a community of belonging, we talked about the schools, childcare services. Want to highlight a couple of things. In downtown Silver Spring, where the former library was, it's where there's the Martha Gilletsky Child Development Center that is being operated by Centro Nia, who I know you all know very well. And that is actually going to hopefully open within the year. And that will be a childcare center that will feature a community kitchen, parent support workshops, including cooking, employment readiness, and adult education, computer, and English classes. The center will offer full-day education and care to 127 children from birth to five years old. And it's a great project and right in downtown Silver Spring. In addition to that, we have been working with Quality Time Daycare in downtown Silver Spring and hoping to support their expansion in the future. And so we're very glad that we have two, you know, projects here in downtown Silver Spring. In addition, we talked about the mental health services. Food resilience and self-sufficiency for our families in need. We have some great programs happening right now in the county with, on food security, being led by Heather Bruskin. And this past fall, the county council appropriated $11 million specifically for food insecurity and to work on our strategy to end childhood hunger. Happy to provide you with more in-depth information about the grants that will be given out to community organizations, providing food to communities in need as well as the long-term strategies. But we are very lucky in the county to have Heather Bruskin really championing this work and heading it up for us. So happy to give more information on that. What else? Oh, property tax credits under fiscally sustainable government. Councilwoman President Friedson has put before us and will look at property tax credit, expanding the one for residents who've lived for 40 years in the county. He's looking at lowering that amount of time, and so we'll be taking that up. In addition to that, I'm working with Delegate Charcutian, who is introducing at the state level, enabling legislation to allow the county to pass a property tax credit for educators. So hope, cross our fingers that that passes this year, but as we're looking at implementing the Blue Plan in Maryland and attract, you know, making sure that we keep educators in the county and attract them to live and work here, we know housing is a huge obstacle for many educators. And so hopefully, providing a tax credit will provide assistance in that area. So, yeah, working hard on the Purple Line. Absolutely, I personally support just cause eviction. We will see whether or not the full county council in the past, it has. That is something that we are still looking at for our legislative, we have our legislative sessions. And so if you know other folks on the county council that you would like to make sure support it, I will be supporting just cause eviction and a number of other legislative pieces you put forward. And as I think everybody in this community knows, the library is very near and dear to my heart. And so any assistance we can provide as you're talking to the county finance department and the county executive, please let me know. And more than happy to help with that.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Want to see if any of my colleagues have any questions? And while we wait for the mics, I do have one point. The zoning text amendment is so exciting. We have a number of faith-based organizations. We have one in particular that we've been working with that is really trying to advance some creation of affordable senior housing. And it is really challenging for them to try to navigate that space. So in addition to some, can you just kind of go a little bit more, like, will there be resources available? Because I know one of the things that we are hearing is about like the pre-design aspects of kind of, you want, so you want to build a building, what are the things you need to do in getting the architects and bringing all the partners together? Will your amendment include certain aspects of that, or is it really more about expediting the zoning process?
Right now, because it's a Z T A, it is expediting that process. So it's really to help where there's a faith institution and they're in a zone that would require them to do a map amendment or the, you know, all that pre-work even before they get to the development review process. And so what this, our Z T A will do is basically make affordable housing a conditional use in pretty much all zones. We didn't touch the ag reserve because they have special things going on there, and we decided not to complicate at least this piece of it. But so that's what, how it would facilitate. I will say there are efforts and things will be announced later in the month of January that are going on in the county. And so if you want to connect our office with the the faith institution, I do think there are a number of nonprofit and for-profit developers who are very interested to partner and help in this endeavor and happy to connect people.
Thank you. Okay, I see a staff too. Councilmember DeBala.
Thank you for coming and giving us the rundown of what you've been doing this year. It's a lot. On the, since the, since the religious institution that the mayor mentioned is in work to, I'll make sure that they get connected with your staff because they're right in that just before application stage where they're pulling their hair out about all those things that you mentioned. And just a reminder, on the leaf blower rebate program, that businesses and residents who are in Tacoma Park
Yes, I, we double, triple check that, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Residents in Tacoma Park, when the rebate program and businesses is up and running, will be eligible.
Thank you. We're working on companion legislation, but that rebate piece is really, particularly for small business, business people here that are working outside the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Gibson?
Thank you, Kate, my neighbor and former mayor. Thank you, Kate, my neighbor and former mayor. Yeah, it's getting to know what's happening in the city, the county and state. Almost all, all this first year has been quite a lot. And I'm just really impressed with the more I'm learning about what the county is doing. I just want to mention the Minor Master Plan and its really ambitious kind of aspirations for, for part of our fair city and the role that the county can play in that. Everything from the, the bridge across Sligo Creek at the end of Maple Avenue, as well as, you know, helping the many existing buildings on Maple Avenue to be retrofitted, to become more energy efficient. I just want to look forward for the continued or for a partnership on those, those many, those many opportunities to improve our community in that part of our community.
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of things, Mayor, that are related to points that were on the PowerPoint. One of them being when we were talking about tax fairness and whatnot. We've had a couple of different issues in the ward specifically, between the distinction between people who have added or desire to add the extra house and a half or the extra half a house to their house and the value that they have created or taken in their homes versus longtime residents who have had no interest in upgrading their homes at all. But those homes are being valued at the premise of whatever their future value is for people who have long-term plans to live in the neighborhood. So what you're essentially end up doing is you end up gouging people who are in that missing middle to eliminate their opportunities to grow within the city. And then we end up with a person who puts in a half on their house, which is fine with me. But if people who are talking about the striations between haves and have-nots and their concerns about wealth and diversity, should put that on a list of things to ask the county or the county executive about. I think also, I wanted to bring up something that's kind of tangential to community of belonging and things like that. And I think that one of the things that's been painfully obvious to me in the time that I've been sitting up here is the, I don't want to say obliviousness, or, well, I guess we'll say that, like the purposeful obliviousness of the striations in the city, more specifically between the young people and the older people. And when I say that, I mean, school-age people. It's important to remember that there aren't a lot of places for people who are in vertical buildings to do anything around here. And that includes all of the lower part of the county. That doesn't just include Tacoma Park and/or the county's unwillingness to provide any real resources for recreation to members of the city. But I think it also implicates the fact that we do have a large population of people who tend to be black and brown, who don't have anywhere to play. At the same time, as we have a county council who, and thankfully you weren't there when this happened. We were at a Maryland Municipal League meeting and there was a lot of effusive talk about how wonderful the county was. And it was juxtaposed against Prince George's. And I was like, well, wait a minute, I used to work over there, it's not that bad. And then we got to talking about youth and youth advocacy. And there was so much coded language about being scared of little black kids that I lost it in that room. And then I was sore anyway, and so I had to like struggle out with my chalet. And it looked like I was pimping and I wasn't, I was just really sore. And then I left the mayor there to have to deal with whatever. And I say that because I was alarmed at how in, in delicate, the delicacy was of dealing with these issues. And when I look at the issue here, I kind of see the same thing. And I'm not blaming anybody for it, but when you look at the project of what this county is supposed to represent and you look at the history of how this city ended up in Montgomery County over the other county or anything else, and you see that there is really a profound willingness for people to be platitudeous about their interests in the poor little brown people who can't afford to buy a house here. But we have done nothing, either here or there, to address any of these recreational issues. At the same time as we got kids wilding out because we've changed laws platitudeously out of the concern that we have about arresting these children. So we are just creating a striated, continued segregated county. And I'd like to know what the goals are of the county to address these sort of recreational issues and as the nexus with juvenile justice.
Great. So far, on your first point regarding, if I understood correctly, the different assessments of homes, assessments happen at the state level. And we are very fortunate to have a comptroller, Brooke Larmen, who is very interested in looking at these issues. It's actually something I worked on here when I was mayor in Tacoma Park with students at the University of Maryland to actually, and Roz Grinsby and the staff here did an excellent job a number of years ago, actually mapping out and looking at the assessments in the city of Tacoma Park and looking at how, it didn't make sense, as you said. And we actually had folks from ESTAT come and present to the county council to explain the process that happens and how the appeals process happens and then how homes are assessed. And the system is broken, but point blank, and we need to fix it. And I think the city's advocacy and others working with the comptroller's office to look at how we can improve assessments is very important. There have been some conversations about, because years ago, the county used to do the assessments, many years ago. Is that something that could happen and would that actually fix things? Or is that, is that better left at the state? So I think those are conversations to have, but I think we're very fortunate to have a comptroller who understands these issues. And so I think if the city of Tacoma Park would like to advocate for that, she would be open to having conversations and talking about the work she's doing. Regarding recreational programs, you know, I will, I will say that, you know, since COVID happened, we're still playing catch-up and getting back online with a number of our recreational programs. But we have, we have a very strong recreation department and provide a number of scholarships and free access to our recreational programs. We need to do more, and that was one of the reasons why my office sponsored with the regional services and a number of businesses in September, when MCPS had a half-day of school, the Buckets and Beats in downtown Silver Spring. And so we had a few hundred young people attend that. We'd had not just basketball and skateboarding, but we worked with local community groups. So groups like Evermind, the YMCA, CCI Health Clinic, to set up tables to connect young people to resources in our community. Because there's, because of the disconnect during COVID and everything, getting young people out again, making sure they know the resources that are available. We've also worked closely with Arts on the Block in downtown Silver Spring. And I know there is a group of
Vice President, I'm sorry to redirect you, but there's a specific angle of this that I'd like for you to talk about. And that is, I think, the distinction between down county and the green pasture of Gaithersburg and all of that area up there. Because what you're really talking about is people who have the access to travel can go up county and take advantage of wonderful recreation programs on wonderful facilities. But people down county can do none of those things because we don't have those facilities.
Well, okay, I would say the investment that went into the Long Branch Community Center and the rehabilitation there, I don't know if you've been there lately to the basketball court there?
Some.
Yeah, I mean, so I think there was investment at the Long Branch Community Center. Long time overdue in the fact that that community had to endure that that was a shelter for so long. But there's work being done there. We also have the Aquatics Center opening in, in the next couple of months in downtown Silver Spring and more rec programs occurring there. So I do know that we don't have a lot of fields in this area, and that is an issue. Having been a soccer coach for over a decade, finding good fields in this area is something that we are constrained by. And that is something I think we do, like, don't have the same, you know, fields as up county does. But I would say in terms of the investment and some of the programming and the direction of our rec department, they're very conscious of making sure that young people have access to that. For example, when we did the Buckets and Beats program, we worked with our rec department to make sure that we had transportation from the schools to downtown Silver Spring, so that young people could get there and be able to participate.
My son won that basketball tournament, it was pretty awesome.
I know, I saw that, I was
And I do just want to say, Vice President Stewart, and I had a conversation with Mayor Ashton after the mayor's lunch earlier this week, just to kind of pow-wow about tax dupe. And one of the things that we did talk about was maybe when we get into the point where there is a reassessment. Right now, tax dupe accounts for more parks, right? And so to what extent can there be reimbursement set up for actual buildings and infrastructure that's devoted to rec in some of the municipalities? So, you know, keeping in mind the fact that, you know, down county, you don't have much room for parks. But you definitely need to have those resources available for, for youth to be able to come into a gym, to play basketball, to have a safe space to be. And so as we start to gradually start to think outside of the box, especially as it relates to down county where space is a premium, trying to think through other ways in which we can try to incentivize the creative use of space for play, I think is something that we can definitely work with MML to have some of those conversations to see how widespread that need is or if it's unique to Tacoma Park.
And I would just like, you know, Mayor Cersei, and your excellent work on Hillwood Manor Park and that update. We also had Long Branch Parks Department is working on that. We also had Gene Lynch Park open in downtown Silver Spring. So I think that's an excellent example of Mayor Cersei, what you're talking about is finding those spaces where we can do parks. We're also, Parks is also having a park right across where Denzins used to be, near the Honda Place. That is going to be also a new park. So I think it's, it's tough squeezing them in, but I will, I do want to give kudos to our Parks Department for how they are looking at particularly our down county, which is very dense, where we can put green spaces and, and how we're looking at that. We're also looking at the Coalfield Center, and we just got a bond bill, a state bond bill of $800,000 thanks to Delegate Solomon and that delegation. And they're looking at revitalizing that, the park area outside of the Coalfield Center.
And I do just want to echo my appreciation.
Green field, just flat field. I know you guys don't like non-green, non-grass fields. We'd get a lot done if we would put one in down here somewhere, I'm just saying.
Well, and I do want to echo my appreciation to the park staff. You know, we've had a number of parks in the city of Tacoma Park, Hillwood Manor. We've had other parks that have been upgraded in the city and they are widely used, and we're really grateful for that. I'm shameless plug for the rec center, though.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, Councilmember Fulcher?
Okay, great. I just want to say thank you for being here, and I'm really excited to work with you in the new year. One of the priorities, I think my top priority was that of pedestrian safety and more bicycle inclusivity. I know you have a lot of experience in COG and the perfect position of being our county council rep and being on the transportation committee there. Yeah, and then also I know that we have some intersectionality with Tacoma Avenue because part of it's in Tacoma Park and part of it's in Montgomery County and some of the issues that are going on there. And in relation to the intersection of Ritchie and Piney Branch, I think it's great that there's a stop sign there, but that kind of feels like maybe a first step for where we might head in the future there. Yeah, and also interested in the biking part of transportation. So making sure that biking is accessible to everyone, including our community members living in apartments and helping to support a bike culture where everyone feels included in bike lanes, including newbies and people that aren't, aren't the best bikers. So I'll get in touch with you once I'm feeling better, so that we can talk about that.
Yes, feel better soon.
Councilmember Siemens?
Okay, now, well, Vice President Stewart, welcome home.
Thank you.
We wish, we wish we saw you more frequently, but it's really been encouraging to hear all the work that you are doing up there at the county and what the county council is working on. Congratulations on your recent selection as vice president of the council. I know you'll do an excellent job. I just, two things I wanted to mention. One is that as we heard from Councilmember Small, the concerns about additional recreational space here down county. It just occurred to me that when you're talking with churches and faith organizations or maybe space for portable housing, there might be some of those organizations that have space that could be used for a recreational facility. Anyways, the other thing I just wanted to call to your attention is that there's a relatively new nonprofit organization here, Maple Community Association, and they were planning a Juneteenth celebration this year. It's going to be on June 19th from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And they're hopeful that you'll be able to stop by and participate in that celebration. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Hansak?
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to see you. I almost wanted to call you Mayor Stewart. Just about to come out of my mouth. I, I just had three, three issues. One, I think, was covered by my fellow council members, but I thought I'd add on one more thing related to tax duplication and equity that we see acutely in the schools and in the, among the youth population here that is, that is exacerbated terribly by the pandemic. I was wondering if a map exists, and if it doesn't, if it's something that could be generated of how many individuals are served by each recreation center in terms of how far away people live from those centers. And I wonder whether that would speak a bit to how accessible these services are. Because one of, that's, and that's one issue, and then the other aspect of that, and I'm just going to throw that out there is, is, you know, I, just to be able to cite that data and kind of get a sense of what that means therefore about what we see when we think we're, we're due some tax duplication for some of the recreational services that we're providing. I think that's probably a correct assessment because there's such high density of people here and not enough recreational services to go around. And then, and then the second thing is related to the intersection at Long Branch near the Purple Line as well as some of the connectivity for pedestrians and bicycles to and from the new Purple Line stations. Like you said, we have a high concentration in your district. I know that we overlap a lot here with the Ward 5. And the, I feel like there's, there's a lot of need there, and it would be wonderful to partner with you, you know, to see how we can maybe make something. A lot of good things have been happening at Long Branch, but on the state highway intersection there, right, right where the city meets the north end of the city. It would just be great if we could, we can all collectively help state highways move something forward there to, to improve things. And then lastly is the, I'm curious if you could speak more directly? And then lastly is the, I'm curious if you could speak more directly to. On Piney Branch Elementary School advocacy. How much sway do you think that we can collectively have on MCPS to close that gap, as you said, on the CIP? Are there other things that our community can do or that we can encourage our community to do to help us out with this?
So I I'll start with the last one on, I mean. You know, I would make sure that you you've already sent a letter to the to MCPS to and contacted each of the the school board members. You know, the and that as this, as the CIP moves forward in in the budget and comes to the council. The Education and Culture Committee will hear it first. And so making sure that you're following someone, looking at Jesse, someone is following along with those conversations. When there is time for public hearings on the CIP, making sure that there's representatives from the city. Who attend those are really important as well as parents. You know, I I will say that over over the years. The groups that the schools that have been most successful are the ones who show up. And I know we have very active parents here and that shouldn't be a problem. But knowing the process, knowing the need to show up with the school board and then once it gets to the county council, I think is really important. So I would do that. And we can find out from our Director of Rec. I'm not sure how, I will say that we serve a lot of people who we may not have the information particularly about where they live. Because one of the things like the city of Tacoma Park, the county is very conscious of is making sure that we have welcoming centers. And so we do ask that people sign in when they're using. I mean, people do have, there are rec cards and things. But I was actually just talking to Director Riley about this issue. With a group of Ethiopian immigrants who use the center and making sure they feel welcome. And that it they have to sign in, but not provide necessarily any other more information than that. So we probably have some numbers, but I'm not sure if we'll have exactly where people live. Who are then participating in some of our rec programs, others like basketball, like the students, we should have that information.
If I could just clarify, I actually, youth data is interesting.
Yeah.
But I I really meant sort of proximity just to people, to the people that are living there. It doesn't have to be youth. I mean, it could be, it seems like a demographic, demographic data that shows who's living in a decachment area. For a recreation center and and yeah, and it seems like that wouldn't be that unusual, but I didn't know if it exists. And if it's not, I mean, it seems like baby, it would be useful to use it as advocacy.
Yeah.
But I I could be wrong.
You know, I'm 90% sure we have, like, I'm visualizing, seeing, having seen something like that with our different rec centers and other things. Yeah.
And to Councilmember Hansak's point regarding MCPS advocacy. We have have testified before the school board. One of the things that's unique about our case is that Piney Branch Elementary. Improvements were included in the CIP, but they're kind of put on hold until the minor master plan decisions have been made. So we have had an opportunity in our last resolution to get the planning board to. Allow the building to be improved. But I think that, you know, in order to make sure that we're closing that loop, I agree wholeheartedly with Vice President, Councilmember Stewart. That we will need to make sure that we're doing that advocacy so that that loop is closed. Because the CIP says one thing and then PA may say something different. And we just need to make sure because of the timing in which these decisions are being made, that it doesn't fall through the cracks.
Yeah.
Great. All right. Well, thank you so much. Councilmember Stewart, for for all of your work here in Tacoma Park and all of the work that you're doing for the region and the county. We really appreciate having you here today.
Great. Well, I'm glad to be here and I hope to come back soon. All right. Well, thank you all for all the work you're doing. I really appreciate it.
No worries.
Thanks.
And so if folks will allow us to just have a quick 10-minute break, just so that we can do the transition. And then we will reconvene with our regularly scheduled programming. Thanks so much. All right, well, we are going to reconvene tonight's meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council. And so again, we went a little, changed our agenda a little bit to accommodate County Councilmember Kate Stewart's presentation. So now we're going to move into public comments. We don't have any voting items this evening. We only have a session on the ordinance amending the city code to remove provisions regarding the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee. So do we have any general public?
Okay, so hi, I'm Councilor Talat. I live in Ward 5 at 810 Flower. And first I want to thank the mayor and the city council for all of the wonderful work you do. And the long city council meetings that you that you go to do the work. So for the city council member presenting. Here, I appreciate. There's a lot of potential. Campus and we could a lot that the community needs that campus and so. Some of the things where the issues were. Schools and safety and kids. We have many schools that our kids go to in Tacoma Park and not all of them are in the city. And not all of them have the same needs and so they, you know, they should get what they need, not be treated as though they were the same. And and some of the schools have a lot more needs than others. My son is currently at Sims', which is where all the kids from Ward 5 go of Silver Spring International Middle School, where the Purple Line construction is happening right outside of his school. And I'm so excited to ride the Purple Line. I'm very happy that it's coming into our town and to our ward. But the construction causes some additional challenges to the kids at Sims' in addition to what's already there. And, and safety is a really big issue for kids who are walking around the campus of Sims'. Sometimes both of the sidewalks on Wayne Avenue are closed due to construction, and they're not supposed to do that, but sometimes that happens. The traffic patterns are always changing. Yesterday, I saw somebody driving in the wrong direction because they couldn't figure out where they were supposed to be driving on the road. So, I think anything that the city can do to advocate for their kids, our kids that go to Sims' to make sure that it is as safe as possible for them to get to school, to get home from school, and to be at school during school and after-school activities would be greatly appreciated. So, again, thank you so much for all of your work. Happy New Year, and I'll, I'm done.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments? Come on down.
I'm Mark Fisher. I am a, live in Ward 5 on Erie Avenue. And there's a couple point, point I'd like to bring up to the council. Up on my street, there is a small civic area, a commercial area that's recently been blossoming. It has a problem, though, that there are three of the antique-style traffic lights that are burnt out. This has been a known problem. It had been a known problem for some time, until last year. I looked into the Pepco GIS system where we report out light, direct item by those three lights, non-Pepco lights. And I reported that they burned out a year ago. It still is burned out. And that the Public Works Department maintains that those are privately owned. I'm curious about that. I think it's much more likely that we've forgotten the provenance of the lights from the time they were put in, because they've been there for a long time. So, I would like to see those, that the city assert city control if necessary for those lights. Correctly, that after over two years of time where they've been burnt out, and many people reporting it. I think getting those lights will do something to improve and reinforce the city's willingness to support that commercial area that is before struggling because of its small size, but we can help it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Good evening, Sue Miller, Ward 3. This evening, I speak on behalf of Community Vision for Tacoma. From the outset, the primary concern of many residents about the Tacoma Park Minor Master Plan has been concern about potential displacement of residents from Maple Avenue. We're still waiting for answers to the following questions. One, why should Maple Avenue be disrupted and be asked to shoulder additional density when it is already our densest affordable neighborhood? Two, will the proposed upzoning cause a cascade effect of rising land values, tear downs of rent-stabilized buildings, new buildings with market rate rents for five years, and displacement as described by the Planning Board Vice Chair? Three, will new affordable housing be equally affordable to the affordable housing that is lost? And four, where is the analysis showing there will be no net loss of affordable housing, given that even the Planning Board Chair says there is no guarantee there will be no net loss? On October 19th, in a recorded planning board session, planning staff referred to the equity concerns of residents and of the council as detailed in your resolutions and in the mayor's strong testimony at the Planning Board public hearing. Planning's response in that work session was that the county's Office of Legislative Oversight, the OLO, quote, "will in fact review the Planning Board draft for equity impacts." So, in essence, Planning said, "Don't worry, that equity analysis is coming later." Then, in December, Planning delivered a document to the city with their responses to each of the concerns in the city's resolution. On page 11 of that planning document, "In response to your equity concerns," it reads, quote, "The Office of Legislative Oversight will conduct a formal impact assessment of the Planning Board draft," unquote. That document from Planning, with that reassurance, is posted with the December 6th City Council meeting agenda. But then, this week, the OLO Director wrote to me that they are not conducting any equity analysis. They never were, and they know nothing about it. So, our city has been waiting months for a promised equity analysis that apparently does not exist. Our questions about affordable housing and displacement, the most important questions, will apparently never be answered in this process. We need to understand what happened here and why, and how this amendment can go forward, given these circumstances, without any equity analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments? And I'm sorry, Sue Kat Miller, do you mind sending those comments?
Yeah, I'm gonna send it right now with links and the timestamp.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Do we have any other general public comments?
Hi, my name is Patricia Consoli, and I'm from Ward 6. I came back in September, and Mayor Cersei and Andrea Baldock were helping me find a place to get, get our problems resolved and ended up at the police station with Lieutenant Butler. We got all, quite a few of the neighbors came, and we met with Lieutenant Butler. And we gave him a list, and maybe it was, was, was too big or overwhelming, I'm not sure. But the last time I talked to Lieutenant Butler, he said a lady was going to get in touch with me and in, in regards to the parking situation on Lochne Avenue. And then, this, a lot, a lot. Nothing's happened. And I don't know what to do. I met, we met with, with Councilman Small. He gave us some more idea. It just, it just didn't go anywhere, you know? And I've got kids that are coming into my apartment building, smoking marijuana, drinking. It, the people, there's people on Ann Street, close to University Boulevard, that are getting drunk and sleeping on the benches there. It's just becoming, you know, not, not that the Purple Line is, is really, you know, causing a mess, but I'm tickled about that. It's just that it's, it's becoming uns safer to, to be out. And I've confronted a couple people that have come into the building and are smoking and doing their stuff. And I, I can't do it anymore. They're gonna, they're gonna start coming after me. So, I asked the landlord to put up another camera so that whoever comes into the front door will, will know they're being watched. I had a $350 purse stolen off the front porch. I mean, it's just, I love my apartment, and I really like Tacoma Park, and I just need to know what to do, you know? There's gotta be, what's my next step that'll get me closer to some resolution? Thanks.
Thank you so much, and we will follow up. I'll follow up with you and Lieutenant Butler and Councilmember Small, and we'll, we'll meet with you to, to get some next steps in place for, for your issue. Thank you so much.
Good luck you all this year.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll see, I'll be seeing ya.
Do we have any other general public comments this evening? Alrighty, so, we're gonna move on to council comments. Do we have any council comments? Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. I am thankful to have residents from Ward 6 come whenever they come. Again, it helps to me to not look crazy, because I say these things to people, and then I get weird answers. I guess what I would say is two things. I wanted to, to happily report that we had the second annual crime and public safety meeting in Ward 6 on Thursday of last week. And that there's a lot of new information up on the website for the Police Department about data on property crimes and other sorts of things like that. What there isn't a lot of information about is these sorts of interactive crimes where, or interactive loitering, discomfort-type things. And the information that they provided, and a lot, sometimes that's because people don't report. Sometimes that's for other reasons. Prior to the meeting, we also had some success in getting with Pepco and some of the other organizations around there to try to talk about the lighting on the outside of those apartments, to make sure that those spaces were safe. And I think the thing that public, or that you're mentioning about, about Lieutenant Butler is related to the distinction between the, the sort of environment, public safety-built environment things and the ability of the Police Department to respond to the concerns of residents. There were several different interactions, or several different questions during that session about these kinds of, of issues, like issues of everybody's getting tenser, the economy is making people tense, the laws are not in favor of helping the police adjudicate children, apparently. And so, there's some things going on, but I don't think that that has anything to do with the increases other than to say that it's not as if we don't talk about these things a lot. And that when we bring them up, there's always a reason why there's some area where it doesn't always go. But I appreciate you coming back in.
I'll be, I'll be coming. Thank you.
Councilmember Gibson?
First of all, Happy New Year to everyone here and to Ward 3 residents who continue to impress me with their advocacy. What, on a positive note, I wanna say that this Friday at the VFW, the Friends of the Library, is holding a fundraiser. I generally kind of report on some things that are happening in, in, in Ward 3, and that's something that might interest you all, a little fun, and a fundraiser at that for, for Friends of the Library. I just want to respond, though, to Sue Miller's comments. Who, and we have been in communication, and I have asked staff for clarification on, on just when and who is going to perform that equity analysis, and I have not gotten a response yet. Perhaps the answer is unclear, but it is something that needs to be followed up on. I expect that it's an important part of looking at the Minor Master Plan, and I will continue to, to ask for it and share what information I learned. Once again, Happy New Year to Ward 3 and Tacoma.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Hanzak?
Thank you. Happy New Year from me as well. And it's great to see everybody, and a few more, few more faces from Ward 5 this evening. I just want to respond, actually, I'm gonna particularly respond to the two Ward 5 residents, if that's okay. One is regarding the, the, the Purple Line and the construction. Indeed, this is a really tricky issue, and I appreciate you bringing that to everyone's attention up here, just highlighting how maybe everybody from the, from the city doesn't always drive through that area, but how difficult it is for kids coming from the city who are coming up the Sligo Creek area, or the, or the households that are driving up and down, or the bus drivers that are coming through that area and trying to get there. It's, it's really tricky to navigate. I, myself, have been participating in those Purple Line community meetings when I'm able, but thank you to your household. You guys have always been representing on that Purple Line Coalition, but it, it would be helpful to make sure that we're keeping an eye on that. I know that's really important to the mayor as well, and I appreciate your advocacy, Mayor. And Mr. Fisher, thank you very, very much for bringing the lights back on the table. It just so happens that, following our meeting in which we were discussing this once again, to, this week, I had the luxury of not working on the Minor Master Plan for the first time in a long time. And, and I, I texted back one of the electricians, one of the two electricians, because I've, I've texted the electricians and the building owners and our Public Works Department, and it's, it's shockingly difficult to get these lights fixed. And, and I made a personal appeal. I said, "What do you think is the problem here? I just can't figure out who the obstacle is or what the problem is." So, I am hopeful that perhaps between your appeal and, and multiple more, and I'm hoping maybe a little pressure might be placed by somebody on the city who's, on the city staff who might be listening, that we could get this thing cracked in light of the, the new businesses coming online. So, thanks.
Alrighty. Councilmember Siemens, is that a hand? Looks kind of Mickey Mouse-like. Okay. Uh, Councilmember Fulcher.
Thank you. A Happy New Year from me as well to everybody, my fellow councilmembers and other residents. Just a quick reminder that next week, on Thursday, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM, there will be a meeting to go over the pedestrian, the, the Maple Avenue project, the Maple Avenue connectivity project. And, you know, I think it's a really important project, because, you know, I'm really looking forward to the changes that we're talking about on Maple Avenue. And even if this isn't necessarily the project that you would have chosen for the city where you think that the connectivity needs to be worked on, I think it's a really great start for some of the changes that we need to see in the city in order to make pedestrians and bikers more safe. And so, I hope that lots of people will join us on giving input. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulcher. Councilmember Dabala?
Yeah, Happy New Year, joining us here. The mayor already mentioned Martin Luther King's Day of Service on Monday. There's lots of activities. There was a list in the city newsletter. There was a list in my newsletter, which was slightly different. Anybody who wants either one of those, or any of the other lists that are floating out there, there's plenty to do on Monday. And the more the merrier. I also wanted to, to note that I also asked city staff today about the equity analysis. And so, we should be getting answers soon. I, my other point for tonight is to thank HCD staff. We had a, an apartment without gas heat over the weekend and in through till, till today, this afternoon. And I'm really glad that we passed that emergency displacement ordinance, because we needed it over the weekend. We had 20 families without heat, and they needed to go somewhere, because it was cold. So, thank you to the staff for working that out with Washington Gas and the landlord.
Great.
Can I have one more quick follow-up? Because it turns out that my neighbor had 40 hours without gas as well in individual property, homeowner. And so, you know, you call, and you call, and you call. I mean, it's just something. And so, I've since written a complaint, but it does not seem acceptable in the middle of winter that people would go 40 hours, whether renters or homeowners.
Well, let's, uh, let's talk with Public Works about whether there's some Washington Gas follow-up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor, if we're doing quick follow-ups, I'd also like to just say that if you look at the list of things that are supposed to be getting worked on for the Purple Line on their most recent transmission to the people, all of them are right here and none of them are getting done anytime soon.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Sorry, I have to pile on. We had our Essex house was without heat from 4:00 in the morning until about 11 o'clock at night about two weeks ago. And we had somebody with an oxygen tube. We had somebody else. Yeah, no, just, I just, and on top of that called the 911 information line as a council member, standing in front of an apartment with somebody on a feeding tube and said, "Please tell me there's some sort of something where I can get these folks a generator" besides calling 911. They did not want to call 911, which I could perfectly well understand. Anyway, I stood by until the power came back on that evening frustrated. So talking to our housing department, they're looking into it. They said there were some good lessons learned this weekend from the situation you were describing. So just thought I would share that because I'm sure that each ward is not alone in these situations. We need better. And Ron Hardy's team, I think, has got some solutions they can offer us. Thank you for letting me pile on.
No worries. Well, it's been an eventful early start to the year. If it's not gas or electricity, it's water. So I do want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and appreciation of our staff, our HCD staff, public work staff that have been working on a number of different issues in terms of the floods that happened over the last couple of days, displacement of various residents in the community as a result of the gas leaks and things of that nature. And definitely, we're going to continue to work as a city to try to work with our partners at S.H.A., Purple Line folks, as well as my Washington Gas to really try to make sure that we are addressing some of these issues that are seeming to come up more often than many of us at the DIAS would prefer. Also, just want to thank my colleagues for going through a lot of the stuff that's going on this weekend, so I don't have to. We'll be at the Friends of the Library events as well as the various service events that will be happening this weekend. So I definitely want to encourage folks to participate. I will be at the Maple Avenue connectivity meeting tomorrow. Yes, so it will be a good time to kind of talk about pedestrian safety and ways in which we can improve it in our community. I do want to give a shout out to the police department and Councilmember Small for putting together the Ward Six meeting. I was out of the country unfortunately, but... Did you? Aw. But I'm so grateful that the video is available, so I was able to take a look. And want to encourage other... Yeah, I did. I laughed. I knew it was a joke. But do want to encourage folks, even if, whether or not you live in Ward Six, to watch that recording that's been distributed to just get a better understanding of what some of the regional issues of crime are and things you may be able to do to protect yourself and your family. And so I do believe that there will be in the future other similar meetings for residents in other parts of the city, so stay tuned. But I do just want to make sure that folks are aware that the Ward Six meeting is available for viewing. And then lastly, I had an opportunity today, it's been a busy couple of days, to participate in the COG board meeting today. And one of the things that we talked a lot about was Metro and their financial sovereignty or lack thereof. And COG is making a number of recommendations to try to address some of the challenges that Metro is having with its budget and making sure that it's able to continue to provide services and really asking for a lot of advocacy, particularly in Virginia in terms of providing those resources to Metro. Governor Moore in Maryland has already committed a large number of dollars in order to ensure Metro is continued to, is able to continue to serve Maryland, but this is a regional issue. And also had an opportunity to hear a lot of the legislative priorities for COG, which includes mental health, substance use treatment, aspects of affordable housing. So happy to share with my colleagues on the DIAS those legislative priorities that were discussed by the COG executive board because I do think that they, it will be, it's nice to know that they align quite nicely with the priorities that we have as well. And so with that, I am going to turn things over to our acting city manager, Mr. Eubanks. I hope you're feeling all right, Mr. Eubanks.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Most of my comments this evening have already been mentioned. I do want to also extend my appreciation to housing manager Devon McNally for his work over the weekend at 7:01 Ethan Hour. Really, a lot of effort went into getting those families housed. So a really big pat on the back to him and the rest of HCD staff. I do just also want to echo the event on Thursday, January 18th. I don't know if we got specific in the time and location, but it's 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. here at the community center. And as was said, that's to discuss the Maple Avenue connectivity project. It's a community workshop. There'll be a presentation and a group discussion concerning the ways to make Maple Avenue safer and more comfortable for pedestrians, bike riders, and bus riders. On January 16th, staff began to prepare or will begin to prepare the multi-family building improvement grant for 2024. So the application's open on that date. A webinar will be held on January 22nd at 6:30 p.m. Awards will be up to 70% of project costs with a maximum award of $250,000. I don't think that number's right. So I will, I'll confirm, it's probably $25,000, but I'll confirm or that'll be corrected in the city manager's comments. And then from recreation, registration for summer camps is beginning soon. It'll be online and in person. And there's a tiered series of release dates depending on what category you fall in. So on February 14th, registration opens for scholarship recipients. On February 21st, Tacoma Park residents are able to register. And then on February 28th, non-residents are able to register. And then I'll also restate that city facilities are going to be closed on Sunday and Monday, January 14th and 15th in observance of Martin Luther King Day. The police department is open for emergency services. And then the city manager comments, in addition to the newsletter, there's a list of activities that residents can attend over that weekend. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to move on to our last item for this evening and that's the work session on the ordinance amending city code to remove provisions regarding the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee. So as everyone is aware, the council had passed a resolution dissolving the Nuclear Free Committee. But there are aspects of our current code where the committee is noted. And so what we have to do is make sure that the provisions, the code is modified, which our city attorney has done, but also that we are, one of the key components is ensuring that a city staff will be able to absorb responsibilities that were formerly with the committee and making sure that the mechanisms are in place to make sure that that happens. And so with that, I'm going to turn things over to Councilmember Dibala, who's been serving as one of the leads on our work group on our committees to kind of walk us through the ordinance. Councilmember Dibala?
Thank you, Mayor. So what you have in front of you, councilmembers, is code changes that respond to the council's request last summer for code language from the city attorney to make changes to the Nuclear Free Committee functions, not to other parts of the Nuclear Free Act. Continue, city continues to be committed to maintaining our status as a nuclear-free zone. And the issue, as we discussed in the summer, is whether a standing resident committee is useful now after 40 years of implementation. Is that the most effective way to do this? And we recognize and applaud, once again, the efforts of the committee members over the many years to get us to this point where we can even have a discussion like this. That said, here we are. And so what you have is basically deleting the specific assignments to the committee. Our subgroup on committees, councilmembers, Fulter, Hanzak, and myself, went line by line through this, through the Nuclear Free Act and the other materials to see if there were any additions to another part of the code that we thought would need to be made. Is there something in here that isn't already in more general form in the rest of the Nuclear Free Act? And we recommend is, this is fine. We don't need to add anything else. The wheres is outlined, the wheres of the resolution outline some of the intention and some of the direction for how things will get done moving forward. But those things, in our view, don't need to be codified. And just as a reminder for how we got to this point, so in 2021, the previous city council did a review of all the city commissions, boards, and committees, recommended restructuring or discontinuing several groups, including this one. This group, this council subgroup on committees agrees with that. And the thoughts are that ongoing attention isn't needed from a resident standing committee at this point. Most tasks in the ordinance are now mainstreamed into city operations. They're done by city staff or they've very infrequently been exercised, and by very infrequently, I mean once or twice in a couple of decades. Or they're no longer needed. City staff supporting the committee is stretched thin. And despite repeated extensive efforts by members, I smile, but I mean it, by council members, by committee members, by city staff, at least four rounds of recruitment, the committee has not been able to build a membership that reflects the diversity of our residents. So those are the reasons why we are at this point with this particular group. And so I'll stop talking about it and let's see if there are any comments or questions. Does Councilmember Hanzak, because she was part of the committee, have anything to say?
No. No, I think you've covered it and we have discussed this at various meetings. Now we're really looking into the code and yeah, I think we can jump right in. Thank you.
Yeah.
Looks like Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, well, I thank the working group or subcommittee for doing this. And I know that it's difficult, given the valuable lessons and services that were provided. I understand and accept that the majority of those functions that were held by that resident committee are to be carried on by the city. In reading through the various responsibilities of the committee, I wasn't clear that some of the public affairs, educational activities were clearly adopted or accepted by the city or that we could, in any, we, the city, would be able to work with the, any resident-led, not, I'm not sure what the terminology is, but not city-led committee. So I'm proposing a motion that we add another whereas. And that whereas is, whereas the educational activities originally assigned to the committee have important civic value, city implementation of the act will include support for resident-led educational efforts. So that's, I will pass this on to Jesse. Do I, I guess, there's discussion or a second? How would you like to do it?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jesse.
Councilmember Gibson, I think that that's a, that's a fine whereas. And, you know, I think that there's been conversations with staff regarding capacity to be able to get that external feedback from residents around education and how we may be able to approach that. And it seems like that's something that's feasible for staff. So I don't have a problem at all with the whereas clause and thank you for introducing it.
Councilmember Small?
Yes, I did want to say that I just had a couple of procedural things about the way the motion is written. It may be helpful if it said in there more explicitly that what we were striking from the code and what the reason is. Because as it stands, it just kind of goes, it's amended as follows and then it's just like the rest of it. And so it could maybe just use another, like one of those bracket-y type things that you see in legislation sometimes where it says such and such is going to strike throughs or whatever. You know what I'm saying? Like at the very end of the first. All right, so like if you look right here.
And the wheres is, or are you in the...
Amended as follows.
Okay.
And then it's bam. But it doesn't say what the, like...
Oh, okay, I got it.
Amended as follows, strike.
And so basically, it should be basically what that amendment is. So striking Article Eight Nuclear Free Committee, chapter, and then actually noting this line.
Yeah, that's the only thing.
Okay.
Okay.
So two friendly amendments?
Sure, sure, sure. So what councilmember, and then we need to go back and just triple check that we don't need to vote on councilmember. We should, we're going to have to vote on your, let's go ahead and knock that out. There was a motion on the floor for an added whereas clause from Councilmember Gibson. It was seconded by Councilmember Small. All those in favor of...
Excuse me, sorry. Is there a moment for discussion about it?
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay, sorry, I had a question specifically about that. I'm just curious, is that in relation to some of our other policies such as, let's say, our sanctuary city or our citizen voting, do we have similar whereas clauses that suggest that we, I mean, it is a whereas clause versus a, you know, sort of policy statement. I'm just, it's a curiosity and I'd like to throw it out there about whether we have something that says that the city, whereas resident-led public education is something that our city should do for these policies. And it doesn't have to speak to this one, but I'm throwing that out there as a question for my colleagues and how that relates to this one. Yeah, for each and every one of them. Okay?
Yeah, not to my knowledge.
Thanks.
No, not to, I would have to, we would have to go back and take a look at the, at prior resolutions. I will say that this particular resolution is a little unique in that we are dissolving a committee where the residents that were involved were, are like technical, national kind of experts. And so it is quite possible that those residents may provide information or encourage, you know, education around specific things. And I think one of the major challenges or concerns was whether or not that would be lost if there were no mechanism. Now, I do think that, and I do want to encourage those residents that participated in the committee, that it doesn't have to be a city committee in order for a group to be together and advocate on behalf of our Nuclear Free Act, which is still in place. And so I think what, and I don't want to speak for Councilmember Gibson, is saying is, let's just make sure that we're providing that assurance to those residents that if they do go down that vein and organize and have their own group, that when they come to the city requesting for different types of education activities to partake of, that we would be receptive of that.
Yeah, but I do want to, oh, sorry, Councilmember Gibson, I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead. You were responding, I think.
Again, it was a welcoming and inviting of these people that have contributed a lot, that they can contribute in the future, and that we would be open to it, without promising them how many hours, days, dollars, or anything like that, but that we would be open to continuing to provide some of the service that they previously did.
And I will say, in terms of education, there are different topics. There are different community organizations that do things like newsletter information or may share information with the city for more widespread dissemination. I'm thinking of the native plant folks and those kind of folks who do quite a bit of education, but they're not an official city committee. And so they do put things out or come and try to work with staff. So I think that that's something that's, you know, that's done. It's not solidified in resolution like this is. But I think in large part, it was because their role wasn't being completely eliminated and formally a part of our code.
Gotcha. Yep. Thank you for the discussion.
No worries. And thank you for the question. And now the vote. So all those in favor of an additional whereas clause as Councilmember Gibson outlined, please say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any opposed? Gibson. All right. And Councilmember Small, your edit, I consider a friendly one. And so we will just make sure that the specific section of the code that was being amended is referenced in the resolution.
Because otherwise, like, because it really is kind of all the way in the back if you.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. All right. So if there are no additional questions or comments, this will come back to you all next week. All right. And so that is our last agenda item. Do we have any other items for the point of order?
I would like to move to adjourn.
And I would second that motion.
Thank you very much. That concludes our first meeting of 2024. Everybody, have a great evening.
Good night.